Larry, are we ready for stream?
We're good to go.
All the board supervisors meeting at order, if you would join in and let me lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any updates, changes, or deletions to the agenda?
So Chairman, we may want to reorder where closed meeting shows up on there, maybe after the public hearings?
Yes. Move item 14 down and item 15 up. Got it. Motion includes that. Second, second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Next is our special presentation appearances, quarterly update from the Fire Chiefs Association. Jeff and Anson, President.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, thanks for giving us an opportunity to come by and visit again. Before we get started with the presentation slides, I just wanted to offer our condolences I'll be having chief social for these passing, he will definitely and surely be missed and has been a great friend and volunteers of Orange County, so thank you very much. Try not to mess this up too badly, I usually pay people to do my slides for me.
I might have to do them for you.
Oh, I just started. So just a quick agenda, we'll talk about the two grants, I'm sorry?
I'm going to start this coming for y'all.
Okay, don't mind. We'll talk about the two grants and then get into what we've been up to here lately. I invite Chief Moore, who's my co-chair for recruiting retention, to jump in and call me names at any time. And then I just quickly listed there on the agenda slide the folks that are currently making up the committee. Firefighter medic Ashley Middleton, who's from 21, Bart Lays from Engine Company 24, Kristen Cook from 23, who's also one of my Volunteer Academy students, Justin Donald just joined us from 25, and then John Farrell from Engine Company 29. I believe you were briefly talking about John earlier. Next slide, whenever you're ready.
Yes, sir. I don't have a switch over here for some reason, Sam. Thank you for your patience.
I'm going to change screens and you can take control.
So under the safer grants, as a reminder, we're awarded two grants. One was through the International Association of Fire Chiefs and the Virginia Fire Chiefs Association. And then the larger grant from FEMA, which is the one we're operating under right now. For the VFCA grant, and we completed our site visit, I guess we'll call it, and the takeoff with the IFC and the Virginia Fire Chiefs Association late in August. At that time, we were and expected delays because of the restrictions of travel because of COVID. And that was reaffirmed that they just completed their last site visit in December, so they're about two months behind. And I received an email today telling me that we should get our reports with the next week, and I'll be sure to share that with the county administrator and the board. So that's been their biggest challenge, and we don't have any follow-on days for that one as of yet, or the recommendations they're going to provide for our master plans and recruitment. On the FEMA side, we received the grant on August 28th. The grant provides funding, as you already know, for media marketing, leadership and career training, structural PPE, and NFPA 1582 physicals, which basically to get the PPE or in compliance with the PPE money, these new folks, these candidates, of which we have three of them right now, maybe four, have to do a 1582 physical. And Chief Moore's been working on that for a while, just finding a resource here locally to do 1582 physicals has been quite a challenge. Most of the career departments in the area don't do them, they do a cut-down version of them, and Chief correctly, if not, so it's been a little bit of a challenge. And then not funded under FEMA grant is the actual master recruitment and retention plan itself, and I'm working with the International Association of Fire Chiefs and VWS, Volunteer Work Solutions, to get some examples from them or to get their assistance. The committee itself has already stated Chief Moore and I are co-chairing, and we've got enough work to go around. The RFP for the media and marketing plan has been released about a week or so ago. We actually have used the grant money for four sets of PPE, all of which these are in my Volunteer Academy right now, which I'll touch on briefly. And Chief Moore's working on getting their 1582, so he's investigating those actual resources. Have you had a, you found one?
There's one, I was looking around for it.
Okay. And then we submitted a request to the Virginia Office of the VA. What we're trying to do is to take our Volunteer Academy, which is basically available to a career fire academy, and see if they'll certify that under the OJT portion of the VA bill, under the different bills, so that when we have veterans who are part of our Volunteer Academy, that would make them eligible to really receive housing assistance, especially if they were, you know, as long as they're discharged arrenged. So I'm still working with that, that's about four tons of big work, and I've come only about two-thirds of the way through it. So the committee is working on our FY or 2021 objectives and priorities, so that we're focused, obviously the first one being supporting the media and marketing plan, where we got the biggest bulk of our money as part of the FEMA grant. We're also developing surveys or potential surveys, and what we're trying to do is, is see where we have, or let me rephrase that, what we can do better as far as the amount of time it takes for someone, once they put in an application, how long we further contacted, what the processing is, the exit interviews, why are people leaving the volunteer service? So we're putting all of those together, and we're going to draft them up and probably give them to the IFC and the VWS to get their inputs and things of that nature. And we're already working on, we'll call it a pilot course for a single point of contact, so that we're automating this, and Engine Company 23 is working with Chief Moore's folks right now, their portal is automated, so people can submit an application, and that application goes to both their, their membership committee, and then at the same time, it goes to, is it April?
Yes.
For April, who's initiating the background of fingerprint requirements. Because we're all operating under the county's EMS license, obviously we have to get the background of fingerprints for every member coming into the county, whether they're working first responder EMS or whatever the case may be. So two things not, or a few things not on here, as I mentioned, Derek Bullington from the Volunteer Work Solutions at the IFC will be sending me information based on our kickoff and site visit. He's hoping that those reports will be here by the end of next week. Hopefully, we'll see how that works out. I also have submitted, and yes, Mr. White, I apologize, later than when I wanted to, the state of the volunteers in Orange County. I actually emailed that to the county administrator yesterday. Basically includes the numbers or statistical data for 2015 to 2019, that'd be a five-year band, to see how we've been doing with active volunteers in the county of Orange. And actually, it was better than I thought it would be, on average over the five years. We've been maintaining about 167 people. Now, obviously, the caveat is, and you'll see it throughout the paper, is that there is no formal tracking system in the state of Virginia, or nationally for that matter, or here locally, that we actually track volunteers. So most of the data is based on the empirical information that I got from each of the five fire companies, and a lot of that is probably based on experience for the way they track their people in and out the door, or whatever the case may be. And, but the caveat was they all had to be active, incident call responding volunteers. Sorry. Other than, on top of that, for the first time, what we did was, because of the restrictions with COVID and the lack of state funding for training, we set up our own, what we're calling a hybrid academy. So we started back in October, and at the end of the academy, if they all successfully make it through, will have completed fire one and two, so it'll be a full-up round hazardous materials operations and also made any awareness. So we're looking still, potentially the only student side of loss were out of county students. So right now, we're holding solid at 15 brand-new volunteers that will be certified. Our first burn will be in March, that's a fire one burn, followed by the fire two burn in April. So they get the majority of their lectures, classroom lectures, online. I'm using a Jones and Bartlett tool that basically is provided to us free of charge because we use Jones and Bartlett books, so they're doing all their online lectures that way. And then we get together for practicals and reviews and reinforce them through that avenue. Not surprisingly, the bulk of the students are doing extremely well. The, I'll call it the 19, 28 age group are really good with the online stuff, and they've been exceptional with emailing me and calling me with questions or whatever the case may be, and all that has worked out extremely well. So with any luck, you know, we'll have a good portion of volunteers. And that's it for briefing. If you gentlemen have any questions for me, there's a lot more details in the paper that I sent the county administrator, and I'm sure he has not had an opportunity to digest any of that.
Any questions, comments for y'all?
Mr. White, is that what kind of safe?
We probably have questions, must be seen.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Absolutely. And then the one thing I still owe you is I'm still looking into potential resources for assessing the public safety of our organization. There's a lot more than I thought there were, so it's taken me a while to get their data.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Moving right along, item four is our consent agenda. Motion to approve.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proving unanimously. New business awarded the contract to Whitmer Public Safety Group for firing EMS uniforms and accessories. Amanda? Need some volume, Amanda.
Can't hear you, Amanda.
Can you hear me?
Love you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. In December, solicitation went out seeking bids from vendors to provide fire and EMS with uniforms and accessories, including fitting services and embroidery. The county received one response, which was from Whitmer Public Safety Group. We've previously used Whitmer for uniforms, and staff has been very pleased with what they provide. So we are asking the board to authorize a contract with Whitmer Public Safety Group for one year with the option to renew for one, for four one-year terms. Any questions?
Questions from Amanda? You've approved the worthy contract. Signed?
Signed.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Amanda.
Thank you.
Five B is adoption of a memorandum of understanding with the Orange County Broadband Authority for Virginia Retirement System Benefits. Motion to approve.
Had a recent exposure to that, right?
Okay. A second? Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Thank you. Discussion, and Mr. Lexny, I would presume that you're handling this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's just simply, a very simple agreement that just allows the broadband authority employees to run to our VRS system, contractual obligations broadband and make the payments, so that the cost doesn't cost us anything.
Just hit the other end of this last night.
Exactly.
I will add that the target date given to us by VRS is July 1, would be the twitch over. So that's, that's the goal. There are studies that have to be done and other things. This is a temporary arrangement to get us until that, approximately July 1.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Lexny. All right. Item five C is the purchase of a mobile clinic for the animal shelter. Mr. Hildebrand, and I see we have shelter staff on Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Presented a memo that I'm sure you've seen in your pocket, I won't go through all the details of that, but basically, this is a follow-up from our discussion at the previous work session, where we explained our current challenges with veterinary services and most viable solutions staff feels like would be to be able to purchase this mobile clinic and continue to use it on-site. And also, I want to note that Dr. Jacobson has agreed to continue her services on a reduced amount for the next two years, Monday a week, for the potential to help more, in case loans require that.
With a reduced amount, the cover what we need?
Well, and I could probably let Gina try to address that better, but I believe the answer to that is, I think it would cover us pretty well under normal circumstances, and then when we have an influx of a large amount of animals, it may be that we would have to supplement Dr. J's services with outside veterinary offices from time to time, but I hope just to minimize that as much as possible.
Would they be able to use this thing then? So we don't have to haul them off to vet's office?
Yes.
I guess the question is, do we know any local vets that would be aware we have it, and would they be willing to use it? I don't know that we have the answer to that.
Yeah, I haven't solicited anybody yet.
So I guess to be perfectly clear, certainly they could use it, we just need to find out if they'd be willing to.
I'm sure at some point, we've had a situation where Dr. J wasn't able to handle everything in the past, would that be correct?
No. No, she's, she's pretty much handled everything.
Except, except during the time that I mentioned with Dr. J for medical reasons, when we, we got a good taste of what life would be like without.
But that's where you were taking to the vets, vets' offices?
Yes, sir.
You save that a lot of time for staff.
A lot of time for staff, and it was evident that that was going to be a very costly alternative to what we do now.
Any other questions?
Question, is there any specific or significant, I guess the word I prefer, maintenance expenses associated with this, this van?
That's a very, very good question, and we, you know, I asked Gina to get with Dr. Jacobson and kind of get an idea on annual costs of the maintenance payment of the vehicle, and there's, actually, it's not a lot of maintenance as far as the vehicle goes, there's some equipment inside the clinic that has to be certified every, I don't know, Elizabeth, you might answer that better, but.
Like the x-ray, that, we do that every two years.
Every two years.
Yeah. Calibration of the blood work, all of that, I can do myself, I've been doing it.
Do you recall what the cost is on the, on the x-ray machine?
For the inspection?
Yeah.
They charged us $75 last time for that.
So it's not, it's not that much. And I will say that Dr. Jacobson's done a really nice job of maintaining the vehicle. And lastly, I will say that, for the most part, it's now going to be parked at the shelter, so there won't be a lot of travel miles on, on the vehicle, so that's going to cut down on maintenance costs as well. So it's really just kind of standard vehicle.
How much worry about the specialized equipment in, either in the labs or the, whatever?
Just the x-ray machines, they're one of them.
Is it powered from the, from the shelter itself?
It will be. Dr. Jacobson has typically used the onboard generator, and she's been there, but I don't see the need of running, you know, hours up on that generator that we can plug into.
But both the unit and the generator will be run on regular interval hours?
Yes, oh, absolutely, yes, sir.
That's because.
Then you're going to, there are more costs because it's not paying.
And Aaron, Aaron doesn't know this yet, but that little generator will be added to his list of generators that have been maintained.
All right, very good. Any more questions or discussions? Would entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second. And that is to prove this. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
All right. Item six, old business, reimbursement of the shelters and getting built apart, Mr. Borges.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, as the board will recall, we have a proffer for the Dollar General Development in Unionville community some time ago, and we brought that forward to the board to ascertain the board's interest in proceeding to accept the donation of a parcel of land adjacent to the Dollar General to be used as a park. The board decided that we should exercise that option and take, take advantage of that proffer. So that transfer has happened, on that property is located a metal structure, sort of like a carport, that had been used by the previous owner as a picnic shelter, and the developer owner of that parcel is seeking reimbursement for the cost of that, so he can relocate it to another part of his business. And this item is available for the board to discuss and make decision on. We have a recommendation there, should you choose to honor that request, to pay that, pay the $600 from, from out. We're available for questions.
Discussion?
I take the, the plan for using this, this apartment, I must admit, I was going to look up the size of it, I've forgotten what it is, but it's a two-tenths of an acre, or three-tenths of an acre, something like that, that it was primarily, according to Tim, something he wanted to use for family picnics and things like that. I mean, it's not, it's not sizable enough to be a ball field or anything like that.
That is correct. It was actually, I believe, residual land from the development, development of the property that was adjacent to.
I think it was about an acre, but.
Well, it's silver acre, it's been 1.2 or 1.3 acres.
That's what I couldn't remember, is it?
And I think they were actually separate parcels.
Yeah, they were separate.
I think there, like, this is land that was cut off when 20 moved from, with the real item of 20, so you, you know.
So Parks and Rec will handle scheduling of that, Tim?
Yes, sir. Like we do with the, with the other picnic shelter.
Sounds like the, the option before us is to leave the shelter that's, that's there as opposed to adding one, once this one is, would be removed by the owner.
Right.
So in any case, we want, our plan calls for there being a shelter, I take.
That's right. We have, if, if it were removed, we would, we would seek to finance putting one back.
Okay. I would entertain a motion at this point. I would move that we would purchase the shelter.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Here none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Passes three to one. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Department Director of Constitutional Officer reports, I see none. We'll move on to the county attorney's report, if he is allowed to speak this time.
No, I'm for the year, I report.
All right, very good. County Administrator's report.
I thank you, Mr. Chairman, and board members. Just, we have a few minutes, so I just want to touch on some legislative matters, some little updates. So we, I've sent some emails about Senate Bill 1355, that's the RSA bill. I know we're going to have some discussion on that, so I don't really have anything to add here, other than it's been passed by, so it's still standing by for us to engage on. Senate Bill 1249, I sent y'all an email exhorting some contact with our delegation. It deals with changing the laws related to planning commissions and putting basically SUPs and rezonings into the same sort of categories, plat reviews with 60-day timeline, really unreasonable changes. Fortunately, I'm, I'm told that that bill's been killed for the session, so we don't need to panic. There is some interesting movement on the budget. I'll hold harmless on cost shifting that would, would relate to us paying for residential services for children. That has been an ongoing cost control issue, so we'll just keep an eye on that and support, you know, BACO and their effort to, to keep working on that. That's, our staff is saying that the cost this year's in the $60,000 range for a couple of clients, and, you know, as you can see, that could add up, and it's hard to predict, but we, we're hopeful that there'll be some, some relief on that. I was actually just talking to Mr. White a little bit about the VADI legislation that might open up some ability for a broadband authority configured like us to take advantage of the grant program without, without having to have an ISP partner, so that seems to be still alive, we're hopeful in that. We know that last year, there was a, the transportation funding where the recordation tax got reallocated to Hampton Roads region to the detriment of everyone else, there's movement to, to work on that and correct that. And then, I think, the last thing I'll call to your attention, well, there's some movement to help with jail per diems, that hasn't, with state inmates, that, that hasn't been changed in quite some time, so we'll see if that, that happens. Final one is that there's a rulemaking in place for some, what it looks like a little bit overreach of the state, putting themselves in a position to take over local DSS. We understand they need to have some oversight, some ability to rescue a DSS, an LDSS that's not functioning well, but this rulemaking, at this point, may be overly broad, so we may want to put some comments in the rulemaking process. I've asked Mrs. Hale to draft something up for me to look at, so if you all have no objection, we'll probably submit something with our peers into the rulemaking process. And so those are just a few updates, and you all get your own versions of this, I know from BACO, but these are some of the things we're, we're tracking. Thank you very much, and I'm certainly available to answer questions or, if you have any other questions.
I was going to cover this under board comment, but something that I would like to see our board be in opposition of is the solar relaxation of what solar companies are required to do regarding our jurisdiction. There's quite a bit in the general assembly right now to basically strip us of the ability to regulate solar, and I'd like to just keep an eye on that.
Certainly. Is that a specific bill yet?
Not to my knowledge. Right there, the, 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 they're out there, and believe it or not, we actually, the new developer of our solar array. solar array is actually opposed to some of the legislation that would benefit solar companies, so that's, that's a positive for us.
I think in some regard, they need to be careful to, you know, careful what they wish for. I think some of the incentives they got around taxation have then led to a backlash in locality saying, well, what, you're taking away our tax benefits, why do we want to approve solar?
Exactly, so, um, but I just, I wanted to bring that up, it's something we need to keep an eye on.
Thanks, sir.
Uh, what's your comment? Mr. Johnson? Great.
Mr. Curry.
All right, Mr. White?
No.
Mr. Frank?
No.
All right, well, I'll run my mouth a little bit more than.
The, uh, Central Virginia Regional Jail has had some COVID cases. They are doing a very good job of trying to keep them isolated and reduce, uh, but obviously when you have a population that they're required to take in, um, things do happen occasionally, so I just wanted everybody to be aware that uh, they are dealing with that, and to the best of my knowledge, dealing very well with it. Uh, one other thing related to CDRJ, uh, they are going to be, they're looking at purchasing a simulator for training for, uh, active shooters or just engaging, uh, people in a, uh, negative manner, and they have, um, are reaching out to the five member jurisdictions, offering the use of it, uh, for training. It, it's a great cost saver because, um, it's for fire range training, save ammunition, the travel down there and everything else, and, uh, this actually provides a higher level of training. Just wanted to make everybody aware of that.
All right. Uh, informational items are there for your pleasure. Next is appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Does anyone have anything?
Good. Yes, sir. Just want to point out to, to Lee that, uh, even though he's been there a short time, Sam's term actually ends in March. We need to, I, I expected to visit with him on that subject on Friday, but since I was unable to to meet, I didn't talk to him, so one of us needs to reach out to Sam, make sure he wants to continue. I forgot whose term he filled, but it was a very short one, so you see on there that he's, he's up in March. You remember Allison, which, you and I just spoke about this the other day, but I, uh.
I think he was, uh, filling George Yancy's on expired term, or.
Thomas Graves, one of the two.
Thomas Graves.
Yeah, I, I don't know, but, but I just, one of us need to be sure to, uh, re, reach out to him, Lee.
Well, I would, do we want to go ahead and reappoint Mr. Reed to?
I would say so.
Well, I would, maybe we do that.
Okay, uh, if there's no others, uh, the appointment of Mr. Reed, reappointed to VASAP. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. That's unanimous. All right, calendar, uh, the only thing I see on the calendar items is we need to schedule a public hearing for a budget amendment under the care of that transfer for February 9th. Take care of that. Is there anything else on the calendar? All right, now at this time, since we adjusted the agenda, we will, um, do our public hearings.
They're scheduled for six, Mr. Chairman, and we could certainly do part of our closed session now if you wanted to, we've got 25 minutes if you'd like. We could, so we're just closed, then recess out closed, and do.
Uh, that's probably what we're going to need to do, but, yes. Okay, would you read the first?
Whereas the board of supervisors, Orange County desires to discuss a closed meeting the following. Consultation of legal counsel in actual probable litigation or such consultation of the meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigate posture of the public body concerning RSA. Constitutional legal counsel employed retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters, prime due to legal rights by such counsel concerning taxation issues in the board vacancy, and whereas pursuant to section 2.237 of A788, according to Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting, now therefore be resolved. The board supervisors, uh, of Orange County, if you have authorized discussion for state matters in closed meeting, need as much.
So good.
Second. Okay, okay, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right.
I would suggest if we're gonna, if we're gonna stick with having a closed hearing, and when we did it, then we can go ahead and make the closed hearing at 5:00. Make it the first thing on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it doesn't really make sense to, I mean, we're not actually having a public hearing.
Right.
We're just hoping to be in public.
A reading.
Right, but it doesn't really make sense for us to.
Yeah, we thought six was going to work, but five would probably be the better option for the time being.
Or at least 5:30.
Well, if we do it at five, we.
We don't have to give a time.
That'd be the thing, we have a very controversial.
Well, I mean, Tom just said we don't have to have a time.
Not for closed, for a public hearing.
No, you know, it's, it's part of the agenda, it's item six on the agenda, it's item six on the agenda. If the meeting starts at 5, that's when you're on notice to be here at 5 because of the.
Well, then, normally we would want the time on there so people would know when to get here. Since we're not actually doing a public hearing, it seems like we won't take that off for time.
Can, can, can we do it now? Do that now, come back out at close?
Yes.
We're ready to resume the live stream.
All right, go ahead and turn the camera over down there.
Okay, has Ms. Thornton joined?
Uh, yes.
Okay, perfect.
Something's messed up with the light over here, it makes me look bad.
It's a reflection off of.
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay.
We don't need to read the language if you all are just recessing close.
All right, we are recessed and closed session. And we are now coming to our public hearings. First public hearing is STA 20-01. We'll consider an amendment to section 54-20 of subdivision ordinance. Purpose of ordinance is to amend and provide for notification to planning commission of waivers or modification of subdivision ordinance requirements as may be granted by the subdivision agent. Ms. Thornton?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't have very much to add to what you just read. This matter came forward as a result of planning commission consideration of some staff determinations that had been made actually under the pre-2018 subdivision ordinance. But they thought that it would be helpful if the planning commission were able to be notified when staff was considering any sorts of waivers of subdivision requirements. The planning commission received no public comment on this matter, and they did vote unanimously to recommend approval of the amendment.
All right, very good. At this point, since I see somebody, Mr. Johnson, have you been messing with this gavel?
I don't know.
Because the handle was loose. Before we go to that, I got a question. When we have a submission, the subdivision agent gets that, how do the neighbors know whether or not a waiver was requested?
They don't. It's an administrative act, and the ordinance doesn't provide for neighbors to be notified.
So how can he or she appeal such a waiver?
Um, let me, I'm sorry, let me just, I wanted to review just a portion of Mr. Lansing's memo.
Okay, let's go ahead and we'll open the public hearing.
Okay.
Open the public hearing, and then we'll move to board discussion in a minute. Because this hearing is being conducted electronically, there's no opportunity for physical public access and no opportunity for in-person public comment. However, all interested persons are invited to submit written comments for the board's consideration. Written comments may be submitted by mail to attention@alison simpson, P.O. Box 111, Orange, Virginia 22960, or by email to acimpson@orangecountyva.gov. They must be received by 5:00 p.m. on Monday, February 8, 2021. Board intends to close the public hearing and consider this matter at its regular meeting on Tuesday, February 29, 2021, after reviewing any written comments. All right, at this point. Yeah, my question is, with a legislative action, there is a whole bunch of public notice and stuff like that, but this is an administrative action. And if you're asking for a waiver, the protections of the ordinance are not necessarily there. And if the neighbor has a grievance with that, how would he even know that such a thing has been requested? And it would seem, you don't want to wait till actually the thing is built and say, "Well, I have an appeal procedure, but it's too late." So how would we deal with that?
Well, one of the changes, it doesn't quite address your issue, but one of the changes that here, I think Mr. Capel requested this, is that the planning commission be put on notice when a waiver is requested, and it ends up on their agenda. So at a minimum, the protection to the property owner, and we could add some notice requirements in here if you like, but part of the reason this change is coming, if I remember correctly, Mr. Capel was concerned with waivers being granted if nobody knew it.
Well.
And so this language, in part, at least the subsection 8 under 5420, is designed to, when a waiver application comes in, notice goes to the planning commission, and they put it on an agenda. So that's more protection than we have to have.
So in that case, is it on the planning commission agenda for approval? Or does that just notification after it's already been granted?
It's just notification.
Just notification. No, I share Mr. Frames' bewilderment. I realize that, on the one hand, we want to have, you need some flexibility for cases where somebody is, I'll say, six inches over the line.
Okay.
But then, unfortunately, there have been cases where there were waivers granted that were much more major than that. And I don't know how we address it. I don't know how we could put in place something where there could be waivers, but they can only be waivers up to 18 inches, just to continue the measuring metaphor.
Well, it would certainly be no big deal to add a paragraph that says an applicant has to provide notice to the adjacent property owners to be requested waivers. So at least the adjacent owners would know.
I would feel comfortable with that.
Yeah.
In the one case that we've kind of brought this up, there were several waivers given to a major subdivision out in western end of Orange County. And they were, I mean, they were fairly, they had to do with roads. They weren't just minor things, they were pretty major. I'm sorry, Sandra, I interrupted.
No, I'm sorry, we started to talk at the same time, I think. I think the prior ordinance did provide more opportunities for waivers to be considered by the subdivision agent. So some of those were eliminated when the ordinance was revised in 2018. But I do think, and kind of looking at the language before us, I think that sort of the assumption has been that if the main aggrieved party would be the property owner as opposed to a neighbor. But as Mr. Lashney has said, I think, you know, language could be added, and I think language would have to be added if you did want to provide that neighboring property owners be notified as well as the planning commission.
I will bring some language for the next meeting. That won't affect the public hearing because we will be making the ordinance more strict rather than less strict, so you could do an amendment, making the ordinance more strict.
All right.
We've noticed the most liberal version of this, so you certainly could amend it at the next meeting and make it stricter.
Oh, we had to go the other way. I didn't do it, but, you know.
No, in this case, you're increasing the protection to the property owners.
Okay, all right.
Because you're increasing their protection.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'll bring some language with me, I'll send it to you all before.
All right. Wonderful.
Any other board comment regarding this? All right, we will, in that case, move on to public hearing number two. And I will not steal your thunder on this one, Sandra, it's STA 20-01.
Um, you can take as much of that as you'd like to take. In this particular case, just in considering some matters and waiver requests that had come related to the construction of a porch or a deck, it may have been a deck. But in any case, I did discover in the zoning ordinance there were some inconsistencies in three sections of the ordinance that would allow the Board of Zoning Appeals to grant a special exception if the zoning administrator was unable to grant the exception requested. But section 70-64 of the ordinance specifically states that the BZA has no authority to grant special exceptions. So the intent of this revision, or amendment, rather, is to just eliminate the inconsistencies in the ordinance. And from sections 70-306, 70-366, and 70-336, it's just to eliminate the language that would provide for the BZA to grant a special exception if the Board of Zoning, or I'm sorry, if the zoning administrator does not make a finding that the porch would, could be constructed as the property owner wishes. So as I said, the intent of this is to eliminate inconsistencies in the zoning ordinance.
I would imagine that at some point when the zoning ordinance was revised, we changed that, and nobody ever went through and scrubbed the ordinance of these inconsistencies, so. So we're scrubbing it now.
Absolutely. All right, open the public hearing. And now, public hearing is open. Any additional board comment? All right. Because the hearing is being conducted electronically, there is no opportunity for physical public access and no opportunity for in-person public comment. However, all interested persons are invited to submit written comments for the board's consideration. Written comments may be submitted by mail to attention Allison Simpson, P.O. Box 111, Orange, Virginia 22960, or by mail, email to asimpson@orangecountyva.gov and must be received by 5:00 p.m. on Monday, February 8, 2021. The board intends to close the public hearing and consider this matter at its regular meeting on Tuesday, February 9, 2021, after reviewing any written comments. All right. We're going to run along with the Lashner.
Just need a motion to return into the previously moved closed session.
So vote second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now included.